Begin the city council meeting for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Mike Greider, and Councilman Dale Anderson will lead us in the pledge at this time. Please rise.
Father, we come here this evening and once again thank you for the blessings you've poured out on this community. God, we ask tonight that you would pour out your divine wisdom to guide the discussions and decisions to this evening, and let us begin to see things, Father, from a positive viewpoint, so that, God, we can see this community continue to be transformed and become something that is beautiful for everyone. So, God, we thank you for this and ask for that guidance and direction in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Ms. Atkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Bowen?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Mount?
Here.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Present.
Mr. Shockley?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
And Ms. Walling?
Present.
And we do have a quorum. Item number three is a synopsis of the last meeting.
Move to accept.
Second.
Have a motion by Vice Chair Mount in a second. That Councilwoman Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the synopsis is approved. Item number four is reports of the mayor. Mayor Steve Williams, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. Earlier this year, Jeffrey Fleming, who's been the executive director of Huntington Museum of Art since two thousand and fifteen, completed a long-term project that will prove to be invaluable, an invaluable asset to our community for many years to come. For two years, Mr. Fleming compiled and edited nearly six hundred biographies of artists who have lived and/or worked in Huntington. This book is called Eclectic Rhythms: The Artists of Huntington, West Virginia, eighteen seventy-one to present. It's now available for purchase at the Huntington Museum gift shop. I'm wanting to present the following proclamation this evening to honor Mr. Fleming for this wonderful achievement, and if he could please come up. I don't know if they told you why you were going to be here. They didn't, huh? On behalf of the citizens of Huntington, Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas Jeffrey K. Fleming began serving with distinction as executive director of the Huntington Museum of Art on July one, two thousand and fifteen, whereas Jeffrey K. Fleming has worked diligently to support the Huntington Museum of Art's three-pronged mission to promote art, education, and nature initiatives in Huntington, the tri-state, and beyond. Whereas Jeffrey K. Fleming has set a strategic goal to bring more national attention to the Huntington Museum of Art and the city of Huntington through promotional and advertising efforts, scholarly publications and articles, and traveling exhibitions from the permanent collection of the Huntington Museum of Art. Whereas Jeffrey K. Fleming has served on the board of fellow arts and tourism organizations such as the Huntington Symphony Orchestra, the Huntington Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, and whereas Jeffrey K. Fleming has supported and assisted in the city of Huntington and the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee's efforts to promote Huntington's sesquicentennial year of celebration and observances, and whereas Jeffrey K. Fleming worked over two years to edit and compile Eclectic Rhythms: The Artists of Huntington, West Virginia, eighteen seventy-one to present, an art reference book featuring close to six hundred biographies of artists who have now lived and worked in Huntington. Now, therefore, I, Steve Williams, Mayor of the City of Huntington, Cavill, and Wayne Counties, do hereby proclaim December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to be Jeffrey K. Fleming Day in the city of Huntington, and encourage all people, businesses, organizations, and institutions to join in honoring this distinguished individual.
Well, thank you very much. This is, was a labor of love. For those of you who have seen the book, such as Doron, I know you've seen it. It all began with a complaint from my grant writer at the museum, who walked in one day and said, "I want to write a grant about why Huntington has always been an arts community." And I said to Tim, "I don't think there is a reference on that anywhere, and I've never heard of anything." And he paused for a moment, and he looked around the room, and he said, "Well, you should get on that." And I sort of laughed it off at the time, but two and a half years later, we have this wonderful reference resource that really sort of shows that we always have been an arts community. We've always brought artists here, and it's been part of our history from the beginning of our existence. And I think it's going to lead to great discoveries down the road. People are already reaching out to us about people we didn't even know about. So I think it's going to be a great thing, and I appreciate this very much, Mr. Mayor, and everybody else. Thank you so much tonight.
Congratulations.
You might recall, members, earlier this year, you approved a contract with the Foundry Theater to manage the Jean Carlo Stevenson Auditorium. And if you've followed the news and have just seen through social media just how active that theater is now, it certainly is a godsend to us, and it's also another indication. Brian may well have planned all of this, to be together on this. We have with us Rachel Allender Carroll of Foundry Theater to give you an update as to what is going on and what is to come. Rachel? Rachel, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council members. Thank you, Mayor Williams. I am Rachel Allender Carroll with Foundry Theater, which is the corporation managing the Jean Carlo Stevenson Auditorium upstairs. So it's been three months since I last visited city council, and in an effort to keep you apprised, this is my quarterly update to you, something I plan to do coming forward. This past weekend, we had Landau Eugene Murphy Jr., along with Holly Forbes, play their first gig of their Home for the Holidays tour. It was Holly's first event after finishing in the top ten on The Voice. It was kind of a big deal. It was a really wonderful evening. We've also had three installments of The Good Time Show, a few other concerts, as well as several dance studios, and schools have come through with performances. This weekend, on the eighteenth, Render the Hearts, a local Christian band, is performing. On Monday, the twentieth, we have the Huntington Symphony Orchestra booked for their annual holiday performance. And then the following night, December the twenty-first, The Good Time Christmas Show, which is sponsored by the city of Huntington and the city of Huntington's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee. And I think you're all going to want to attend this event because our dear mayor is set to make an appearance, as well as Chief Janerater, who I was told may be appearing as the ghost of Colas P. Huntington. So this is my update, but most importantly, I want to say thank you to, thank you to all of you for your support. Thank you for everyone who's been able to attend, and I welcome any feedback you might have for me, but otherwise, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. And, Mr. Chairman, just as a matter of personal privilege, I want to thank every one of you. I didn't get choked up at the funeral, and so have gone you all. Thank you so much for the kindness that you showed my family. With my mom's passing on... Stop it. On December first, she's quite a lady, a force of nature. Some of you who knew her, Coach Bailey, you knew her quite well. She's a very strong, passionate woman with a heart just as big as it can be. And the kindness that you showed, the loving kindness, the arrangement that was sent from council and the clerk's office is stunning, and it's in our foyer in our home. And I'm reminded of the affection and love of this council with every time I come walking through that area. So with that, thank you so very much. I do need to, for some reason, there's a thought that just came through my mind after Rachel and Jeffrey talking about arts in the community. One of the earliest, earliest memories that I have of my mother and me, many of you might be aware, but my dad was a teacher and head football coach at Concord, then college, back in the late nineteen fifty's, early nineteen sixty's. And this, my brother was born in nineteen sixty, so this had to have been in nineteen fifty-nine, but I was just a little guy, three years old. Evidently, Mom couldn't get a babysitter. There were always arts presentations on campus, and I remember Mom carrying me to the theater to be able to see a play. Councilman, you know how my wife is so involved in the theater. That's one of the earliest thoughts, and one of them, I got sick in the midst of it, but as a mother would know, Mom carried me up, and I just remember her holding me, carrying me across that campus. But it ends, my dad, my dad was a coach, and I grew up loving sports. But Mom made sure that I was as exposed to the arts. And when my wife knows that I love to watch ballgames, but I enjoy just as much going to the opera and to the theater and going to the museum and looking at the art and spending hours there, she was shocked as can be that a jock could also learn that. And what I've come to understand, because of Mom's example, a community, a person, isn't complete if you don't reach in and also exercise the body, make sure that you're exercising the soul spiritually, but you're also exercising the soul through art. And for that, Jeffrey, thank you. And Rachel, thank you for what you all are doing. And again, thank you for the graciousness that you showed to my family. Huntington is a living, caring, giving community, and you represent your constituents well in that regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number five is a second reading of an ordinance, two thousand and twenty-one dash O dash two-one. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cavill County Board of Education on behalf of the Huntington Police Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Vice Chair Mount.
Good evening.
Chief Calder, good evening. This is your first time. We get it. It's okay.
I'm getting it. Okay, this agreement will allow the Huntington Police Department to continue providing a school resource officer at the Huntington High School. The payments made to the city by the Board of Education is increased by three percent, but everything else in the agreement remains the same. This payment covers the salary and benefits of one police officer, and it is reimbursed to the city budget. This agreement will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the officer will receive thirty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents per hour, and the city is covered under the Board of Education insurance for one million per occurrence.
Any questions for Chief Calder? Anyone from the public? Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Walling?
Yes.
And Mr. Shockley?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item number six is a second reading of an ordinance, two thousand and twenty-one dash O dash two-seven. Ms. Atkins.
Ordinance vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of Twenty-Sixth Street being a parcel twelve point five feet in width and a hundred and sixty feet in length, situate in Gideon District, Huntington, Cavill County, West Virginia, being the westerly portion of said Twenty-Sixth Street, containing two thousand square foot, zero point zero four six acre, more or less, parcel bounded on the south by the north line of Guyan Avenue, formerly also known as Guyan Dot Avenue.
Move for adoption, please.
Have a second?
Second.
Councilman Jackson, beat you. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Janie Lockman, city planner, city of Huntington. This is a petition from Rubberlight to abandon part of the right-of-way of Twenty-Sixth Street right next to their building on the corner of Guyan Avenue and Twenty-Sixth Street that is approximately twelve and a half feet by a hundred and sixty feet. If this petition is granted, Rubberlight plans to expand their building at this location. This part of the right-of-way was appraised at three thousand three hundred dollars. Maps and a survey of this area are included in your packet. At the planning commission meeting, the commission discussed whether there would be future utility needs in this area and whether the proposed abandonment would impact traffic on Twenty-Sixth Street. With the exception of AEP, none of the utility companies had infrastructure in this section of right-of-way and did not have any planned expansions in the right-of-way. The width of the total city-owned right-of-way at Twenty-Sixth Street is eighty feet, and of that eighty feet, only about thirty percent makes up the roadway. So the part of the right-of-way that Rubberlight is petitioning to be abandoned is currently covered by grass, and the abandonment should not impact traffic that's traveling on the road. Planning Commission voted to send this to council with a favorable recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions about this petition that you might have, and Mr. Paul Testani is here tonight from Rubberlight in case there are further questions that I'm unable to answer. Thank you.
Any questions of council? Okay. Anyone from the public? On item number six, Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Walling?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Shockley.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item number seven is a resolution, two thousand and twenty-one dash R dash eight-four. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council accepting financial assistance and reimbursement from Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for recovery of expenses related to February two thousand and twenty-one, ice storm, city of Huntington, D R four six oh three, citywide debris removal.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Rumbaugh, and a second, I believe, Councilman Bowen. It was about a tie, so it goes to the runner. Appropos with Coach Ensco standing up here.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I appreciate the excitement of wanting to adopt this already. In February of this year, we had a severe ice snowstorm, as everyone is aware of. The heavy ice accumulated damaged many trees throughout the city, and in response to these storms, Governor Justice declared a state of emergency on the sixteenth of February, and President Biden subsequently granted Governor Justice's request for public assistance for Cavill, Lincoln, Mason, Putnam, and Wayne Counties. The public assistance grant provides reimbursement funding for emergency work for state and local government entities, and a resolution before use to accept a FEMA public assistance grant for debris removal for the February ice storms. The Public Works Department was out for four thousand six hundred and seven hours, point two five regular hours, a hundred and seventy-eight point seven five overtime hours, two thousand two hundred and forty-six point three eight equipment hours, and disposal costs of four hundred and ninety-five point seven nine tons of debris, for a total project reimbursement of two hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. While many of you were sleeping, and the citizens were sleeping that night, I'm very proud to say we had about forty-two people from Public Works that worked throughout the night, nights, making sure that our streets and our roads were as open and as quickly as possible, and remaining safe themselves. The Finance Department, in conjunction with Public Works and Rick Montgomery, specifically the comptroller for the city of Huntington, led this project with FEMA through many meetings, and he is to be congratulated and commended for the efforts put forth.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ensco?
You did a great job, Tim.
Thank you, sir. It's because of the people that work with me.
Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution, two thousand and twenty-one dash R dash eight-six. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to furnish the Huntington Police Department with ammunition.
I would move for adoption of resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Bailey, a second by Councilman Anderson. Chief Calder, welcome back.
On November fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, solicitation number two thousand and twenty-one dash eleven dash O one, ammunition purchase for the Huntington Police Department was issued. All bids were due on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, by ten o'clock a.m. This bid will provide the Huntington Police Department with practice and duty ammunition. We received one bid for the purchase, and that was from the gun shop of Vincent Town, New Jersey, in the amount of thirty thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Funds for this project come from the capital outlay, other equipment line of the Huntington Police Department general fund budget.
Any questions for Chief Calder from council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number nine is a resolution, two thousand and twenty-one dash R dash nine-one. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council approving expenditures of American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, ARPA funds, including approving the grant of ARPA funds to the Huntington Storm Water Utility for the purchase and installation of a transformer at the Fourpole Creek Pump Station, and a grant to the Huntington Sanitary Board for the Third Avenue and Fifth Avenue, Twenty-Fourth Street to Twenty-Fifth Street Storm Sanitary Water Separation Project.
I enthusiastically move for the adoption.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Jones, a second by Vice Chair Mount.
Brian Bracy, good evening. Good evening, Chairman, fellow council members. Brian Bracy, Executive Director of the Huntington Water Quality Board. Before you is a critical item for, that is put in front of you. One is, because time is so sensitive, there's two maps that I have provided to each of you. The first map is the drainage area of Fourpole Creek and Crouch Creek. Fourpole Creek substation, as each of you know during our tours, is in dire need of replacement. Three separate transformers that operate, four pump stations that literally pumps the entire stormwater west end of the city of Huntington. A failure of this substation fails all four pump station. Fourpole Creek no longer would be able to be transferred out of the city of Huntington, as well as Crouch Creek, flooding all of the west end. Councilman Sweeney, Councilman Rumbaugh, Councilman Bowen, most importantly, and Councilman Mount would all be, and their constituents would be affected by this. Critical item. It'll take us roughly about sixty days to secure there is one transformer of the twenty-first century that is available to be able to replace the three individual single-phase transformers. One in Colorado today that we have secured by deposit, hopefully with your approval to get this item and to get it underway and get it in place, because the water is coming. Spring rains and spring fall will bring the Ohio River and the Guyan Dot River up in front of us as well. The second item in front of you for the Huntington Sanitary Board is a map of the drainage area, the combined sewer systems of the entire area of Hylawn. It is CSOs thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, Third Avenue and Fifth Avenue, the most critical areas for the development for the ACF Properties and Flint Group underway today. And, but we all know that through the history, that Third Avenue in heavy rains, Third Avenue and Fifth Avenue will flood, cars will get, get literally stranded, and motors will get stranded, businesses will get flooded out, homes will get backed up. That, that area of, of the city of Huntington is completely combined. Both stormwater and sanitary water are combined in all of the pipes, which is one of the problems that we have. It's, it's one of the only areas in Huntington that literally is one hundred percent combined. So this is our first separation project. When I think about the ARPA funds itself, there's no better need today. As I shared earlier, and I'll say it again, I could take literally, the Huntington Sanitary Board and Stormwater Utility can take all the ARPA funds and probably do one and a half projects with it, because of the, the amount of the infrastructure needs that each of you got to literally put your eyes and ears on, and, and eyes and physically see today. I think about really what's good use in this administration, this mayor has really put a task to the Huntington Water Quality Board, is resolve the issue that's never been resolved in any history whatsoever, which is the flooding on Third and Fifth Avenue, and can it be done, and can it be done cost-effectively? What's sitting before you today is, cost-effectively, we can resolve and, and resolve the flooding that happens around Twenty-Fourth Street and Twenty-Fifth Street on Third and Fifth Avenue by a separation, completely separating the sanitary and stormwater lines today.
Any questions for Mr. Bracy?
Once again, not as much as a question, but I sit here and watch you, I'm gonna call it a presentation, give a presentation three times in a row, and you came with the same energy every time, so I definitely can appreciate that.
Appreciate that, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Bracy, comments?
Energy comes from Mr. Jones. I will say that. He feeds my energy as well.
Yeah, and I, I will tell you, Mr. Bracy, when we stepped off the bus that night, I said if the purpose of this tour was to get my attention, you've got it. So I'm glad to see, and if my memory serves me correctly, that is a lower dollar amount, even though that is a substantial amount of money, but lower than what was predicted on the tour. So kudos to that. So appreciate it. Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number ten is good and welfare, and we'll start with the public first. Josh Keck? Mr. Oh, man, you're prepared with props. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Josh Keck, two nine zero three Staunton Road.
We'll give Ms. Atkins a second here to get this out.
This is more for after, so.
All right, sir. If you'd like to go?
Good evening, council. A few weeks ago, I was out running on Marshall's campus when an SUV ran a red light and hit me. It was on Third Avenue and Eighteenth Street. A few weeks before that, you'll know that Mary Beth Cox was hit and killed at that same intersection. It's actually the second time this year that I've been hit by a vehicle while running on campus on Third Avenue. So getting hit by a vehicle as a pedestrian is terrifying. It shatters you. It changes you, your mentality and how you feel safe. But what really rattled me that night was when I realized I was about three steps away from Mary Beth's memorial where I got hit. Now, I brought a map with me tonight, so I'm going to leave this here with you, but I just want to illustrate, this is campus. This is where I was hit. This is where Mary Beth was hit three weeks earlier. This is where Marshall Professor was hit three weeks before her, and back in March, I was hit on Third Avenue and Nineteenth Street. I brought this with me to illustrate the pattern of accidents that we're having on Third Avenue on Marshall's campus. So when I got home that night, I started realizing, okay, I've processed this for a second, and I thought, okay, the city knows about this, and Marshall knows about this. It's been in the news. Everybody knows what happened to Mary Beth. So I figured you have to be doing something about it. So I figured you have to be doing something about it, so I looked online to figure out what it was that you were doing about it. And what I found was, in my opinion, pathetic. And I mean that with all respect, but it was pathetic. Here is the response that I think I've seen, and you guys can correct me if there's more that I don't know, starting with the Marshall President. Marshall President writes a letter to the mayor, and he says, you know, we're devastated, we're a big family, we lost a family member today, but you know, this is really out of our jurisdiction, this is a city problem, we really can't do anything. So Marshall's done nothing. Mayor gets the letter and he responds back, yes, we're devastated too, we're really upset about this, we know it's a problem, it's been a problem for a long time, we really need to do something about this, so what can we do? I know, I'm gonna write a letter to the West Virginia Division of Highways, because after all, Third Avenue is Route sixty, and that's a state highway, and we can't really do anything about that here, it's kind of out of our jurisdiction, so we pass the buck to the West Virginia Division of Highways. Now, at this point, like, it's cool, that's fine, I'm not mad, I get it, you're playing your politics, you're writing your letters, you're assembling the team, right, all the Avengers are getting together, it's fine. Where you lost me is where, when the Division of Highways responded to the mayor's letter and said, oh, wow, yeah, that's really bad, but, yeah, like, we're devastated too, but we're really busy right now, so we can't really do anything until like, maybe the spring. And even then, you know, we're not, all our guys are too busy, so we're gonna send a contractor out, so now we're, we're gonna send another guy. That's the response that I'm, that I'm understanding, and, and I don't know if that's all there is to it, but that's all I've seen, so effectively, that's where we are, in my opinion. The city's done nothing, Marshall has done nothing, and the West Virginia Division of Highways has kicked the can down the road four, five, six, seven months and passed it off to some mystery party, so now we're on their timeline, and all they're gonna come out and do is just take a look, right? All they're gonna do is take a survey. They're not coming out with equipment, they're not coming out with paint, they're not coming out with signage, they're not coming out to actually do anything, they're just coming out to take a look. That, to me, is crazy, that, that we're gonna wait four, five, six months just for them to come and take a look. So, I learned about this and I got pretty mad. I went home and, and I started to make a petition, and in the petition, I just outlined everything that I saw that was wrong with the streets around Marshall's campus, specifically Third Avenue, Fifth Avenue. I run around there all the time, so I'm familiar with it, I'm a Marshall graduate, I've been there, I've lived it. I wrote down what I think are common sense solutions that we can do to help fix this, to get it a little bit more safe. I don't think these are all things that we need to wait for a survey to do, some of these we should be able to do right now, I would hope. So that's what I did. Five hundred people have signed this petition, Mary Beth's family have signed this petition, and the result of that is what's in front of you and what I'm giving you tonight. So, here's what I need from you. I don't have time to get into the, the details of what I've written out, I would like you to take this information packet home and read through it, and please, what I need from you is to come back by January tenth on your meeting with a reasonable action plan that details for us what you're gonna do to make this problem, to make this area safer, how you're gonna do it, and when can we expect it to happen? When can we expect to feel safe again while we're on Marshall's campus? I'm gonna leave this with, here with you as a starting point, where I would like you to consider, all these little red dots on this map, these are streetlights that are out, eighteen of them on Marshall's campus that are broken. You need to look at all of the crosswalks because they're starting to deteriorate badly, you need crosswalks in places that don't have them, you need to consider lower speed limits. There's lots of things that we can do that don't require a survey. I'm not saying that that's all we need to do, I'm all about the survey, I think the survey would be great. I would love to see us get rid of some on-street parking, maybe put in a traffic refuge in the middle of Third Avenue. There's lots of other things we can do, but what I'm seeing and experiencing is that nothing is happening until way down the road, and I don't find that to be acceptable. So please, come back, January tenth, you know, take the holidays, I get that, but please come back with an action plan telling me how you're gonna address this problem.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question.
Point of privilege?
Sir, have you thought about setting up a meeting with the various?
Mayor, or Bob, we would have to waiver the rules to allow you to speak if you choose.
Waiver, man, 'cause I wanna tell this man something.
We have a motion to waive the rules for Councilman Bailey to speak, and I have a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Have you thought about setting a meeting with our mayor and the chief of police and going over these things with your committee?
No, but I'd love to.
If you do that, you'll get all the help in the world.
Yeah.
'Cause the mayor's on top of this thing, he's already been working on it, I know that. And, you know, we have a new chief, I'm sure he would be interested in it, so if you can do that, I think it'll help you and we can get things done. You know, we'll take our guidance from the mayor and the chief, what they tell us to do, and, and we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay, yeah, no, I'd like.
I understand your problem.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and my pledge to you, I will talk to our council representative that is in charge of our Public Safety Committee, and then they can work from your information, and thank you so much for putting, you know, such a detailed thing together for us, and then have them correspond with the administration and mayor and see what the, the Public Safety Committee can, can come up with, okay?
That would be great, my, my contact information's in the packet, I'm gonna leave this here.
We'll help you all we can.
Thank you. All right, and next is former Councilman Bill Rosenberg. You know the drill, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Bill Rosenberg, six-twenty-six Fourth Street West in Huntington. I actually come tonight wearing two hats, one of which is the Director of Resource Development for United Way of River Cities, come to say thank you to members of council who have, over the past six months, provided micro grant dollars to the United Ways, United Together Community Give Box, which is a food, clothing, and hygiene pantry that we installed a year ago on our property at eight-twenty Madison Avenue. The way that that box is stocked is we have different corporate partners that's, that take over quarterly sponsorships, and what we've pledged to them is that we would match their dollar contributions, and so the dollars that micro grants have come have, have done that, they've matched those money, and we just celebrated our one-year anniversary of that, of that box last week. So thank you all for that. The other hat is past president of the Kiwanis Club of Huntington, which we just had our point set of sale, and thanks, oh, by the way, it was sixteen hundred dollars worth of, of micro grant money for the, the give box. We also received twelve hundred and fifty dollars from five members of council to, for the second year in a row to partner with the Campbell County Senior Services Organization, I always mess that up, so that meals-on-meals recipients who are shut-ins and live alone could receive a point set of this year for Christmas. Last year, we were able to provide a hundred and fifty seniors with those, this year, we made it to a hundred and sixty, and we only did that because of, of your support and your help, and so, just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Stephen Angel. Name and address for the record, Mr. Angel.
Stephen Angel, eight-thirty-nine Ninth Street. I was here previously, as I think some of you recall, of the issue that I'm having with the house next to us, which is a recovery house for Newness of Life. We've had significant issues with them, I've determined through talking to the past owner that this has been an ongoing issue with them for at least probably four years. They continually block our driveway, use our driveway for a turnaround, and now, on the fourth of this month, our driveway was being blocked, my other half came out the back door, said excuse me about three times, to no response. She then whistled, which was not much more louder than what she was saying, excuse me, to which then she finally got a response, an aggressive response of, don't whistle at me like I'm a dog, from one of them, and then they started going on, and there was about four or five of them. The car pulled across the entire driveway blocking it, and they were standing there having a conversation. One of them got very snippy, and are you leaving right now? Are you going anywhere? To which, and there is, I believe this was somewhere probably between one to three p.m. that Saturday afternoon, you can go to the police department, there is a recorded call of me being on the phone with the police. I ended up telling them eventually that I didn't need a unit sent out, but three of them, very aggressively, came up onto the property. Lisa, my other half, who was out there trying to speak to them, was at the door. They aggressively came up on the property, three of them, including one male, not twelve feet from our door, in a very threatening manner, and, and being very aggressive with her, all because we asked for our driveway to not be blocked. I, I've spoke to Mark Bates, I've spoke to Council Lady Teresa Johnson over this in the past. At this point, I know, because they're a recovery house, they're given leeway, but they have been given plenty of leeway, and I think they have proven at this point that if they're anywhere where they have neighbors, they're gonna continue to cause problems. I don't need to be concerned about when I walk out my door now, because three of them are trespassing and being very aggressive when we ask for them to not block our driveway. There was a sign put up, and that sign is doing little to nothing to alleviate the issues with the driveway being blocked. This continues, and now normally, I wouldn't say anything about this because this would be no big deal to me, but it's just a total inconsideration of our property and everything. Our driveway is constantly used for when, I don't know if it's a boyfriend, husband, or whatever, drops one of them off at the house, and our driveway is constantly backed into and used as a turnaround also. Like I said, it has been a continual blocking of the driveway. There was an exception made, a sign was put up, do not block driveway, these people literally had the sign right in front of their face. This continues and continues and continues. At this point, I, I'm very much asking that whatever steps are necessary are taken to make Newness of Life have to relocate this recovery house. It's just a continual issue with them, and I don't know what the, the zoning or whatever it may be called is, but I can tell you also, probably, I don't know, it was about two and a half, three months ago, I had one of the women in there, it's a female recovery house, tell me there's thirteen of them in that house. So I don't know if that's past capacity or not, but I was told there was thirteen of them in this house that's next to us. Our driveway is on the Ninth Avenue side, and I would ask this, like I said, one, I really, really want them out of there because they have been nothing but a problem for at least four years that I can determine. We've been in that house for about two years, the house was vacant for nearly a year before we bought it, and I spoke to the previous owner, who told me he had issues with them, with the driveway. As I stated previously, they had, I don't know, a boyfriend or a husband out there one morning at four o'clock in the morning screaming and yelling. Lisa opened the window and asked him nicely, can you please be quiet? People are trying to sleep. To which, as I did last time, I will censor myself, this person didn't, he responded F you to her. So, and like I said, now, they're aggressively trespassing on our property, coming up in a threatening manner, three of them. Lisa has MS, she's disabled, my daughter has severe scoliosis, she has back problems, mobility issues at times herself, and obviously, I have issues myself. We should not have to wait or ask somebody to move to be able to get in and out of our driveway, and this is a constant, constant issue with them. We spoke to the female intake director five or six times, I tried to speak to, I forget what his last name is, his first name is Justin, owner of Newness of Life, whose response was to block my number so I could no longer call. As I said, I've spoken with Teresa Johnson, I've spoken to Mark Bates, who has spoken with Justin, it doesn't stop. If there's any kind of relief, it lasts maybe a few weeks, a little bit longer, and it starts all over again. And I think Ms. Johnson can attest to that, 'cause I've talked to her several times, I've also talked to Mark Bates several times. It just continues and continues with them. You know, and like I said, now I have to be concerned when I walk out my door, looking around to make sure no one's coming up on me, because we asked them to stop blocking our driveway, and they get aggressive, and they trespass, literally trespass. I mean, literally, I'm not exaggerating, we're about twelve feet from our back door, three of them.
Mr. Angel, what is the address for the Newness of Life?
I believe it's eight-forty-eight Ninth Avenue. Like I said, our driveway is on the Ninth Avenue side, the address is to Ninth Street, the driveway is on Ninth Avenue.
Yeah, and, and I would, just hearing your story for the second time, anytime that there's trespassing, someone being aggressive towards you or your family, that is why the good men and women of our police department are there. I know you said in the comment to, you told them to kind of stand down after the initial call, but that's, that's what our HPD guys are for.
Yeah, I think once they got wind, I was on the phone with the police, the women backed away, and then I, I don't know if it was one of the women that was on the property at first, but a woman came up and was pulling the man by his arm to get him to back away.
And the reason?
And it was being very threatening to a disabled woman.
The, the reason I say that is, is now you would have documentation of multiple occurrences, you know, with nine-one-one, with our HPD. So just my recommendation, when it escalates to that point, let, let our HPD handle it in the situation where we have some records and documentation as well.
I was on the phone with them, and like I said, my requests are this, I, I really, really feel at this point, they should have to relocate to an area where they won't have neighbors because they've proven time and time again, they're not gonna be respectful of their neighbor's property. I'm also asking that with the sign that was put up that said, that says do not block driveway, it's obviously not having effect. If a secondary sign could be put under that, that says by order of city or violators will be towed to try and drive the point home a little more, and my last request would be, considering that this is an issue, and I now have a call into the police department, is it possible that patrol units, if they're driving by and they see someone blocking the driveway, that they stop and communicate with those people that are blocking the driveway? Because I assure you, at some point, they're probably gonna see it.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, thank you.
All right, that closes the public portion of good and welfare. We'll start to my right with Councilman Jackson.
On me, I have something for us today.
All right.
We are, our YMCA is in an alliance with surrounding YMCA's as far as state goes with some in Kentucky as well as West Virginia, and we're helping the YMCA in Mayfield, Kentucky coordinate relief efforts for the folks that have been affected with those tornadoes. So donations will be sent directly to the Mayfield Graves County YMCA, a hundred percent of the donations. Now, I have some specific items here, but I'm sure when people are wanting help, they're not gonna really hold you to that, but they are asking for baby care items, personal hygiene, hygiene items, cleaning supplies, paper goods, over-the-counter pain relief medicine, first aid supplies, prepackaged food, water, and obviously, cash, we can put it into our computer system and then send, send that one to them. Like I say, we just wanna have the opportunity to do our part and help out as much as we can, so you can drop this stuff off at the May Building location or the Field Climb Family YMCA. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Walling.
I have a couple of things. First of all, big news on the South Side, the Eighth Street Bridge has reopened. It is a vast improvement. I understand that there are still quite a few aesthetic details to be completed and, and to be worked out, but I'd like to thank the South Side Preservation and Enhancement Alliance for participating very heavily in the development of that design. They have made sure that it will keep the historic accuracy of the bridge and the character of the South Side, and I, I can't wait to see the finished product. Secondly, I learned today that for anyone who's not gotten to meet Chief Calder yet, that on Thursday morning, he's gonna be down at Hattie and Secondly, I learned today that for anyone who's not gotten to meet Chief Calder yet, that on Thursday morning, he's gonna be down at Hattie and Nan's on Fourteenth Street West. Right? Do I have that? It's Thursday, right? At eight thirty? Yes. Ish. Ish. Maybe I've, maybe I've called poor Chief Calder out too soon, but I was very much looking forward to attending and I hope to see some of you out there.
Councilman Anders?
Just two, two personal items. One, I hope you guys have a good holiday, 'cause we will not reconvene until after Christmas. And today is my mother's birthday, and if she's watching, I'd like to say happy birthday.
Absolutely.
Um. Sorry, Beth. I'm gonna skip you off, sorry.
Councilman Bailey? Yes?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I would like to see you remember those people down Mayfield in your prayers, 'cause they've got a bad situation down there.
Yes, absolutely. Vice Chairman Allen?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things for me too. This is, well, first of all, well done, Chief Calder. Good job. And the first time talking to council, it was great. It was good to see you up here. The second thing is, this is our second annual Holiday Road Light Tour we're doing here in town. It's just a few of us that last year decided to do it because there wasn't anything else to do because of COVID. This year, we decided to do again. We have almost as many houses. This is, like I said, our second annual. The beneficiary is, again, this year Harmony House. Starting next year, we're gonna rotate through different beneficiaries, kind of spread the love everywhere. If you wanna get on the Facebook page, there's a map now. Someone who's better at maps than I am made a map. You can vote or just enjoy the tour. Everything's on the Facebook page. We just want everyone to get out and have a good time and be careful. Thank you.
Councilman Sweeney? Councilman Rambo?
Sure. I had the pleasure of this past weekend going down to the West Edge Factory to enjoy a production of A Cozy Christmas, presented by Alchemy Theater. It was absolutely delightful. It is a local production written by Mike Murdock and another cool guy named Simon Wood, maybe? I forget his last name, apologies. But it was absolutely a charming, family-endearing, tear-creating, singing, joyous moment, Christmas-style holiday extravaganza. So highly recommended. I had a blast. And it was amazing to actually attend a theater production, because I can't remember the last time that I did that because of the pandemic and COVID. So it was absolutely a joy. So I wanted to share that and give them props. I also wanted to say I was so delighted to hear that the, that the strike, the strikers at Cabell Huntington Hospital, that that strike has finally come to a close and that things are coming back to normal. But I'm also still very saddened to hear that the steelworkers' strike is still going on in the Special Metals. However, there is good hope that they will be reconvening at the negotiation table tomorrow, I believe. And so I'm wanting to wish them all our prayers and good mojo and hope that, again, everyone comes to the table with sensible heads, especially at this time of year, and that the, that the workers get a fair contract. And that's that.
Zigzag, Councilman Jones?
Thanks. As most of you know, I'd requested to propose this evening a courtesy resolution, which would have given all the members of council the opportunity to cast a vote in favor of hope and peace, prosperity, prosperity, security, and success for one of Huntington's leading industries, Special Metals Corporation. Sadly, my request and the opportunity was not allowed. So I am going to read to those in attendance tonight and all those watching at home, my proposal substituting my name in place of city council, so you will know what we did not get the chance to consider. Be it resolved that Pat Jones, here at the holiday season, a time which should be filled with joy and Thanksgiving, would like to express my earnest hope that the parties involved in the workstof at Special Metals Corporation will come to the bargaining table and renew their efforts to settle their contract in a manner that is favorable to the working people of our city and its surrounding area. And that further, this will provide financial security to them and their families while assuring the continued success of this vital iconic industry and thus bring peace to our region at a time when we traditionally celebrate peace on earth and goodwill to men. I felt that such a public statement by council the night before resumption of negotiations might have helped serve to move the parties forward with a greater sense of urgency. I close by wishing all here and out there, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Councilman Bell?
If you haven't noticed by now, Christmas is quite possibly my favorite holiday of the year. To those that don't celebrate Christmas, I wish you a happy holiday of your choosing. Those that do, happy holidays. I pray everyone has a safe finish out of the rest of the year. Look forward to seeing all your smiling faces one more time before we rein in the new year.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Hi, I would like to remind District Five, there will be a community meeting, informational meeting, tomorrow at the A.D. Lewis at six P M. There will be informational meeting for District Five hosted by myself. Wanted to see you there. I'm inviting the businesses and the residents of the Fairfield District Five community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will close by talking about our Gallagher Village Neighborhood Association, that right now jointly vice chair Mountain and I share. Yesterday, they had a nice little cookies and cocoa with Santa Claus. I wanna thank the gentlemen firemen of Station Ten, who provided Santa a nice little chariot to ride in with the kids. Kim Williamson, our neighborhood association president, and Shelley Muth Atkins. Shelley, if you do not know her, she is probably one of the most wonderful, creative people when it comes to holidays, decorations. She's got the square there in front of the nine-one-one center looking better than it ever has at the holidays. We'll have continued efforts to build on that over the years. My goal is to have it be one of the premier village little square areas for people to come by and see. But thanks to those ladies who put it on last night and the firemen of Station Ten for assisting as well. And that's all I have. Anyone else?
Chairman Mike, I'm so sorry. I have one more bit of Good and Welfare to pass along. Thank you. I believe last Monday, the first medical marijuana dispensary opened up in Huntington, West Virginia. This is pretty huge news. However, since, after attending that event and speaking with the owners and actually some of the Medical Marijuana Advisory Board of West Virginia, apparently, there's a shortage of doctors in Cabell County who are licensed to do the medical evaluation to provide those cards to those who have medical need. So this is kind of a general call-out that if there are any physicians who are interested in undergoing the four-hour webinar, there are many patients in Cabell County. I've actually received about one text or phone call every fifteen minutes since making the Facebook post. Literally hundreds of people have reached out to me who don't understand or don't know how to or have been turned away by doctors who have not undergone the training to provide the appropriate medical evaluation. So if you're a physician in Cabell County, there are, there are residents who need your services. So please consider helping out those who desperately need medical help. And that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved.